I'd like to open this board meeting of July 10th and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Spanish translation?
We have Bud Andrews with us tonight. Bud, would you please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself and speak to our vast audience about what you can do for them.
Ole, buenas noches. Yo soy Bud Andrews. Trabajo aquí en el Instituto Escolar. Si cualquier persona necesita traducción, ayuda con la traducción para que levante la mano.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And I don't know, if anyone needs hearing technology, as indicated on the slide, it is available. There was no action taken in closed session, acceptance of donations.
I move to accept with gratitude this record amount. It looks like an enormous amount here.
Second.
All those in favor, accepting with gratitude, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's four zero, and Dr. Noel is absent. He's on vacation. Superintendent's report.
Well, we're at that time of the year when our secondary summer schools are in full swing, and today is the first day of the brand-new school year for Cleveland Elementary School. How about that? Cleveland's starting enrollment is 365 students, a number that often climbs over the summer. We have a number of our own district teachers involved in training at this time of the year. Forty of our teachers are attending the Avid Training this week. Avid is designed to move average students to higher levels and increase college-going rates. Robin Sawaski and I were both with the teachers yesterday. Paul Turnbull will not be with us tonight. He's still with the teachers and administrators in the Avid Training. Another 20 of our teachers, counselors, and administrators are involved in Just Communities Equity Training. I will be involved in that. Robin will be as well later this week. And it's training in creating equal opportunities for students. And, oh gosh, Robin, do you know how many of our teachers are involved in our Science Matters grant?
The teacher leaders or the...
Well, I counted 10 here. How's that?
We have 10 teacher leaders and probably about 40 other teachers that will be participating.
Good.
So probably about 40, 4th through 6th grade.
And we have a flyer on Science Matters. I'll get flyers for the board members as well. We'll put those in your boxes. Well, we also just received notice from the California Department of Education that all nine elementary sites that applied for the garden grant have received funding. $2,500 per site for materials and supplies to support their gardens. Thank you, Robin. Here's an update on the number of teacher layoff notices that have been rescinded. All but one teacher have been returned to the teaching positions. Now, a number of the positions are temporary. For example, if we have a teacher on leave, we need to hold that position. But what happens is that through attrition, over a longer period of time, and that'll be over this next year, we'll have retirements and we'll have other people leaving the district to move to other areas. Of course, our fall enrollment numbers will have a big impact on the number of teachers we will need, so we'll follow those enrollment numbers very closely.
Did any of the teachers find other jobs in the meantime and decline their offer, or did they all accept?
You know, yes, a couple of them did, not many, and I don't have the actual numbers, but I think that's a worthwhile report for a board brief because we should know that. And I know, in part, we may have shaken the confidence of some of those teachers to have permanent employment in the district. In other cases, I know of people whose spouses got jobs in other areas and who have since resigned and moved on to other areas, or who wanted to buy a house in another community. That was one that we had talked about, who wanted to buy a house in another community and got a job in that area so that they could buy a house in that community. I recently met with educators in China in a delegation sponsored by the Chinese government. It was an interesting trip, complete with speeches in the Great Hall of the People and tours of high-powered school programs for elite students in China, as identified by their examination results. Examination results go far in China. I have two quick notes I'd like to share with you. First is the discourse we heard at one of the schools about the overall development of students as opposed to learning information and facts. Doesn't this sound familiar? The mission of this school was to teach students to be scholarly, well-rounded, civically responsible, and morally healthy, loaded terms to be sure. The second thing I wanted to share is how impressed we were to see a five-year college for students ages 15 to 20 devoted entirely to the training of preschool through first-grade teachers. Now, isn't that an interesting concept, spending five years devoted to perfecting the craft and the skills to become a teacher for preschool through first-grade teachers? During the five years, every aspiring teacher learned the piano. In fact, this school had over 100 pianos. I was impressed by that. They also learned singing, arts, crafts, as well as child development and teaching methods, all things that they would be expected to use in teaching children, plus how to develop computer programs to teach beginning math and reading skills. It was quite impressive to see these kids, they're kids at this point, soon-to-be adult teachers, developing programs and animating their own computer programs in order to teach preschool children through first-grade children these skills. I would also like to comment briefly on the district budget. It's all on our budget. We're off China now. That was it. On our budget. It's painful to make budget cuts. It's also important to have the assurance of a healthy budget. We are awaiting the county analysis of our newly adopted budget, and we will bring a discussion of the reserve back to the board at our next board meeting, which is in early August, for further discussion. And that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. That was interesting. Public comments. I don't believe we have any slips. Okay. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. Any, would somebody like to entertain a motion? Does anybody want more discussion on a particular item?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion?
I was just going to point out a retirement of Wendy Mokler. I think I pronounced that right.
Mokler.
Mokler, a counselor at Santa Barbara High School was with us for 26 years.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes four zero. So we're on to our action agenda, and the first item is approval of the plan, site plan and timelines for the co-location of the Santa Barbara Community Academy at Luccumbra Junior High School.
Well, we listened carefully to the board when we recommended the approval of a plan and timelines and budget for the location of the Community Academy grades K through six on the Luccumbra campus. We've done considerable amount of work since then. We believe we have a highly refined site plan, and it's one that we're able to deliver within the same budget. We don't foresee any difficulties with that. And to present that, I'd like to give credit to Dave Hetjung, and Dave, of course, worked with Joe Wilcox, our architect, on a lot of this. And I'd like, Dave, to walk you through the site plan, walk you through the draft parking lot layout, and walk you through the timelines. And I'll make comments as we go, Dave, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sarv, board members. The site plan that you see before you, per your direction at the two board meetings ago, I think it was, that we, Dr. Sarv has met with both principals and come up with a plan for allocating the space. The color plan in the agenda is, has been discussed with both principals, has been agreed to by both principals, and shows a delineation with the blue being the academy spaces, the yellow being Luccumbra spaces, and the gray being the spaces that they're both occupying. Also, then, in the agenda, a few changes. The budget, you gave us the budget last time. We don't have to relocate the science lab, but we do have to do some things in the parking lot and some other things. So we're basically using the same money with a little different focus, and we believe we can accomplish this with the same budget. On the table and in front of you, you'll see a timeline. You should have a two-sided sheet. The front page will start with, in the upper left-hand corner, ID1. That would be the front side. We broke this down into different activities for different rooms after having met with Joanne Caines. We previously met with Amy Alzana. You also have, in front of you, a draft of the parking lot and of the portable layout. Let me first go to the parking lot, if I could. The shaded area at the entrance is the area that needs to be reworked and will be put out to bid to widen that driveway. The rest of that parking lot is basically striping on existing asphalt, which can be done right away, so we'll have to have a little bit of work on the site, on the part of the site, to control traffic for drop-off and pickup until that driveway can be widened.
Mr. Hetjung, ours doesn't have, our diagram doesn't have shading. Do you just mean right here where it hits Porta Swallow?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right here should be, just hopefully, a little bit darker. If it didn't come through that way on the copier, I apologize.
It didn't, but if that's what you mean.
Ms. Hetjung, do you have, do you have the slides to put up for?
This one I can put up, yes.
Anyone who's in the audience and also for TV at some point?
And Dave, maybe we could identify these by the numbers that are on the slide. Number one, which is the width of the opening. I'm not sure what number two is, but I believe number three may be the new fence post, but I'll need you to verify that. So here we're looking at Porta Swallow. You see it oriented.
This area right here is the part that would need to be redone by contract. Yesterday morning, Carl Mayros had a pre-construction conference, demolition of the portables, and this area is currently taking place. They're right now doing the abatement before they demolish those portables. There'll be a little bit of asphalt patching, and basically, this is all existing asphalt, so this is just striping. And so, right now, this driveway will only let one car come in and out. So until the driveway can be widened, which will be, oh, probably towards the end of the calendar year, this is going to be a bottleneck right here for dropping off and picking up. But we do have a drop-off lane right here for dropping off students. You can come around and exit and parking.
Now, Dave, you have numbers on that. The number one is over on Porta Swallow and identifies the 24 feet, which would be the width of that opening.
Right.
Number, yeah, go ahead.
And this still has to go, this is, this is, this is a draft layout. This still has to go to the city. We still have to get city permits and approval, and they may modify this. They may say they want a little bit wider. They may say they want the drainage to be redone a little bit differently. But we have Flowers and Associates who have done work with both us and the city, and they've based their estimate knowing what city standards are.
Okay. Why don't you continue through those? Number two, what does that identify?
Number two is just relocating the drainage that goes across. Basically, the city has a requirement for trench drains, so that's just a trench drain.
Then number three, on this side of that opening, is that the new fence post?
There is, there is a relocation of some fencing in here. Number four would just be the striping for the exit entrance. Number five is addition of some concrete walkway. That way, students can walk along the concrete, enter the site, and not have to interfere with the traffic. This existing tree down here, we've designed around the tree so the tree can remain. The bike rack that's in this area will be relocated. Right now, we're looking at a couple possibilities. One is currently where some of the cafeteria personnel park, and they would park in the regular parking lot instead. We're trying to get the bike rack in an area where students have a minimum of conflict with traffic and cars. And so we're working with, Joanne Caines knows that site real well, and she's given some valuable input. And before I go any further, I need to say that since you've approved this project in concept, that both principals have been very, very cooperative in developing a plan and moving forward. So I need to say that right up front.
While we have the parking lot layout on here, orient me a little bit more. The bus loop, where will that be?
The bus loop is up, further up here.
Further up Porta Swallow, okay.
That would be the existing bus loop that remains, where they would come in, exit here. The only thing is when the buses come in and exit, then the buses are going to have to go up Porta Swallow and around.
Okay.
They can't make this, the short buses can make this turn, but the long buses can't.
Okay. And then, where will the portables be? But in relationship to the parking lot, I just...
On the backside of that sheet.
Yeah.
Again, this is a conceptual drawing. What we're doing is we're moving in two portables to begin with. We're putting in the infrastructure for five. So we're putting in enough utilities and power. When we bring it one time, we're bringing it for enough for five portables. So portables will be roughly in this area. We've decided that we want to leave the emergency lane in front of the portables rather than behind them. In other words, we don't want the portables up in here. We're moving them back. We don't know exactly how far. We've tentatively placed them half on the asphalt, half off the existing asphalt, meaning we'd add some asphalt in here as we go. That's a tentative site plan. This has not been the DSA. We're still looking at the fire department access right here, as far as coming around this corner. The existing place structure at the back of the academy could be located here, could be located up here. In talking with the principal of the academy, Amy, she indicates she likes this area because these classrooms over here will be the K-12, and K-12 primarily uses this structure, not the older children. And so we're in discussions. Is it better to locate it here or here? Originally, these two portables, as we go, when we go back to the site plan, I'll talk about what's going to be housed in those two portables. One's, would be a library, and one, starting off, would be a classroom.
Couple questions. Are they relocated from other places?
They're relocated from existing elementary sites. The two portables that we had allocated, that we had planned on bringing to Franklin to house Cesar Chavez, to take two leased portables back to the vendor, we're bringing those two portables here. And then, once we have enrollment figures in the fall, we'll identify two others to bring to Cesar Chavez, which means we just delay for four or five months returning two portables to the vendor. We're relenting with developer fees to bring them here first, and then waiting till we know who can give up the portables to figure out which two are going to go to Cesar Chavez. So these, these would be existing portables that we have, that the elementary district owns, that would be relocated to this area.
About how old are they?
Typically, when we relocate portables, we take the last in as the first out, so they would be newer portables.
It says on the map on the other one that there's, it says 19 rooms in main building for the Santa Barbara Academy. Does that include these two portables? It says in main building, so that means they actually have more? It's hard to tell what's a classroom and what's a...
Those numbers, when Joe redid the shading, he didn't change the numbers. Basically, what we have here is, we have the kindergarten, first, second grade in this area, and the upper grades in this area. This was originally going to be a kindergarten room. We are not going to make that a kindergarten room. That room is actually going to be a special ed and offices, and one of the kindergarten classes will be located on this side. We've met with Amy on this. This is the area where we're talking about moving the playground, if you can see the red dot, right here or down here by the portables. As you look at the tentative schedule, we're hopefully can get everybody moved in. They won't, everything won't be 100% complete, but everything should be complete enough for people to move except the computer labs, which means that these two rooms that are currently Luccumbra Computer Labs would not be available on July 30th when they start school. So tentatively, the office will remain here, and we'll move classrooms here. We'll leave two second-grade classrooms at this site. As soon as we can get this computer lab up and this computer lab up and running, minus air conditioning, these two computer labs can move, and we can do the air conditioning as they function. And as soon as these computer labs move, we can move the office, then we can move the second grade over, hopefully, towards the end of the calendar year. So what we're looking at is, if you approve this plan tonight, tomorrow morning at 9:00, I'm meeting maintenance supervisors at the site. There's some minor things that we need to do as far as moving TVs, moving science cabinets, modifying some rooms, the things that we can do, and purchase materials with developer fees, as indicated on the plan. Some other things will have to be done by contract services, some minor contracts. The major thing is, in these computer labs, we need to purchase some electrical equipment and some carpet to get those going, and we don't have a board meeting again until the first Tuesday in August. So as part of this approval, I would let you know that I plan on purchasing some carpet and electrical items ahead of your approval of the purchase orders, which you would typically do the first board meeting in August, and hopefully you'll approve those when they come to you in August, because I will have already ordered the materials if we want to meet this timeline. I need to indulge and ask the board permission to spend a little bit of money before it's formally approved by the board. We don't, we don't like to do this. We don't do this as routine, but typically...
But it would be done within the budget.
Within the budget, and typically, we don't give a vendor the go-ahead until you approve the purchase order at a board meeting. And so I'd like permission for carpet and items for the computer labs, carpet, electrical materials, routers, things like that. These two computer labs are run on the same equipment, and so it doesn't make sense to take the equipment out of here and move it when this room is going to be a computer lab. So we need to purchase a little, some few things for the new computer labs.
I think, were there board member questions?
So by July, excuse me, July 31st, the portables will be?
No.
No.
These two portables will not be here till the end of the calendar year, and that is why we are going to propose leaving two second-grade classrooms at this site until these two rooms can move, until these two computer labs can move out, and then we can share spaces temporarily, even moving the second graders over before these portables show up. We can share a library with another, with a computer lab. We can share an office with special ed. We can share some spaces. We've worked with the school, but during the year, they'll be able to spread out into the area that they need.
Also, what about the parking lot? When will that be done?
Well, the parking lot...
Actually, that's, yeah.
Yeah. The striping can be done right away. This redoing of the driveway would have to be done during a school break, probably during Christmas break.
So the restriping will be done by July 30th?
Oh, yeah. The striping we can do, but like I say, we're going to have to have some traffic control with the site, helping to direct traffic. So we let so many people in, then we stop them coming in and let people out to drop people off. Hopefully, because of our split schedule, hopefully, we can drop people off in two areas.
Well, I had thought that, that the point was for everybody to move at once and for the work to be pretty much complete, so everybody could move at once.
That was originally the point.
That was originally the point, but not having an approval till July 10.
Let me talk about some of these features. When we were originally anticipating the office being in 108, Dave, do you want to highlight that 108?
108, right here.
Then, it made sense to have Community Academy in that downstairs hallway, although we had the major traffic issues with junior high students going to lunch, well, going in from, from gathering in the morning, then going to lunch, nutrition break, things like that. And when the office got moved over to 116, Dave, identify 116.
116.
No, no, it's the first computer lab.
Right here, I'm sorry, 116.
There we go. Then, instead of the school being located in, in three different areas on the campus, the sixth-grade wing, that downstairs hall, and upstairs, since there's a stairway at the end of the sixth-grade wing, can you identify that, Dave, at the top of the sixth-grade wing?
Oh, sixth-grade, I'm sorry, right here.
And then identify where it leads to upstairs.
Right there.
Right there. Then...
We have a new pointer coming. This one's not, a green one.
Thanks. Then, both Amy Alzina and I thought that it would be really to her advantage and the school's advantage to be able to monitor those two areas, the sixth-grade wing and the upstairs, rather than the three areas. I was very pleased with Amy's thinking, with Joanne Caines' thinking. In fact, Joanne Caines came in with a very much can-do, we want to make this successful, point of view, and she suggested some things that would help her site and that would minimize disruption for her site, maximize safety for the students at Community Academy. Just as an example of that, I'll just walk you through a couple of those. Since those rooms upstairs, the 207 and 208, Dave, can you identify those? Our large, no, they're the next two up.
200, oh, I'm sorry.
They're Community Academy. Since they're large rooms, one is already a science room, and there's not much of an advantage for, say, fifth graders being in those rooms as opposed to using them for science for seventh, eighth-grade students. She, she determined that she could have the teacher step to the hallway during passing, which is a good practice anyway in junior high. But that we'd have that control and monitoring by the teachers, that she would also move across the hall upstairs into, oh my gosh, 202B, that big room.
202, right here.
The seventh, seventh-grade Core Knowledge Program, so that as the rooms upstairs in Community Academy get strung out, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and then thereby encompass both of the restrooms upstairs as part of the Community Academy, there's a little bit of a relationship with the Core Knowledge Program upstairs as well. Joanne also identified a couple of areas, and Dave, maybe, I just spoke to Dave Odell and told him that he didn't need to stay for the agenda item, so I sent him home. So I didn't hear, maybe you talked about this, but upstairs in 202, or, excuse me, 201A and B, that that is now one large room, and that room can be divided and can then house special ed students or smaller classes in those rooms. That, along with another change, which is a change in the library bookroom, the current library bookroom, to create a computer lab adjacent to the library, which is a big advantage for the school and for the library, but would also provide bookroom space where Dave is pointing now, would, would have some significance for the academy. And the significance is that instead of converting the other room upstairs, 204 at the extreme top, to a computer lab, and using 10... to a, a computer lab, uh, and using, uh, one oh, one hundred downstairs as a classroom, that's the first room as you go inside the door, uh, and designating one of the four tech rooms out in the tech wing, the, the, just identify those four tech rooms, there we go, as a classroom.
Three oh one is gonna be the art room.
After doing that, uh, she assures me that, uh, she will not have to have a regular classroom in that one windowless room, I think you referred to it as the dog room. Oh, I thought that was very telling. I mean, no one wants to have their classroom in that room. But you can do a video production class in that room, or you could do a lab, uh, where you wouldn't normally have windows. So, uh, not to say that that room doesn't have some future, but no one wants it as their, uh, as their current classroom. Uh, and Lacumbra would be able to avoid using it at this point in time, uh, as a permanent classroom. So I was, I was pleased with Joanne's thinking, with her accommodation. Uh, I was pleased with, uh, with Amy's thinking and her accommodation. Amy's with us tonight. Joanne's, uh, in Avid training with her teachers and, and we were with her yesterday, but she's not here tonight because she's got a big team at Avid, uh, this week. By, by moving the academy so that it's in this, what was referred to as a sixth grade wing and then the upstairs, um, it required us to bring in portables sooner than we expected. And last time I was talking to you, I wasn't anticipate doing that. Uh, and I wasn't anticipating that because, uh, we had more classrooms downstairs. But I think it's a reasonable thing to do. Uh, I listened carefully to the discussion about whether, uh, whether there should in fact even be more portables along that row so that we could allow for the expansion, whatever expansion we needed at Lacumbra, should their numbers continue to grow. And I think it's wise to simply leave the two second grades here. We'll put them right here next to us so that we can monitor them, although Amy will certainly be back and forth. Um, and we'll have, uh, veteran teachers in those classes so that, uh, so I don't anticipate any difficulties in a late move to the Lacumbra campus from those two classrooms. Well, those were the points I wanted to highlight in terms of changes and accommodations.
This art room up here is moving into three oh one, so this room gets divided. These two science rooms here are moving down here across from the existing wet lab. And, and that's some of the major work inside because dividing this room and moving some of these science uh, cabinets and displays and demonstration tables for the teacher i- i- is, is part of that, uh, more difficult work. A lot of the rest of it is relatively, uh, less complicated as far as design and implementation. And then the, like I say, the, the creation, they currently have two computer labs and we're creating three. So when you say, what does Lacumbra get out of this? Well, they get their third computer lab that they wanted so, and needed.
My question, Ms. Parker touched on it. It really gets back to the parking lot. I mean, I'm, I'm pleased with the floor plan. I'm, I'm glad that, you know, the team worked together to work out um, something that's beneficial to, to both schools. I'm really concerned about the parking lot, um, with the July thirty one opening because the timeline on the completion of it looks like it goes all the way through to December. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'd be able to do the striping, but this, this entrance is gonna require city approval and permits. And so, once we get those, then we have to not be able to not use the lot during construction. And so the ideal, ideal time to do that would be during one of their intercessions or break. If we do it during their intercessions, then we still restrict access back here uh, for emergency vehicles that would have to come in over a lawn, which is not preferable because firemen engines can sink if the lawn is wet. So we're really looking at safety and saying, when can we take this driveway out of service and be safe? And the best time is during Christmas break.
See, I, I guess I was misunderstanding completely because I thought we were not substantially moving Community Academy additional classrooms over until we had reached a substantial completion point with the parking lot. So I was operating under a completely different set of premises.
If the board wishes to proceed in that manner, then we could still do all the work and move them at, at a later date.
My concern with it is not just when you do it so that it's not disruptive to the academy, but what's happening on Porta Suelo when you are restricting, when you have to, uh, it's getting blocked up and you're holding people off from going in and taking turns going in and out. What is gonna happen to the residents trying to get in and out? Is there gonna be backup? Have you done much analysis on that?
No.
Well, from the diff, from the different start times, from the, uh, early arrival of a number of students, and Amy can probably speak to these numbers, uh, then the arrival of the primary students, then the arrival of the secondary students, and then a separate bus arrival. Uh, we expected that to be, to be spread out, uh, through about an hour's period of time uh, in the morning. And the only bottleneck there is that bottleneck of getting in and out, which is a one car, uh, passage. Well, it's about one and two thirds of a car passage. It's just a, you could drive two small cars through it, but not two large cars.
Well, I, I think that the plan, uh, looks good and I'm pleased to hear that you're being sensitive about, um, making sure that, uh, before one school moves into a space that is really ready for them to go into. Um, but I, I personally would prefer for it to happen once the parking lot opening is such that cars can go in and out at the same time. You know, two cars can go in and out. I'm, I'm concerned. I think it's, um, there could be more issues than we are, than, than we're really taking into consideration here with that.
What's the timing on the permitting process from the city?
Joe?
Steve Flowers has already done a preliminary layout. He's been here.
Joe, would you please take a microphone there?
All I can say is I know Steve Flowers has already done a preliminary layout. We've already modified it a couple of times and reviewed it with Dave. I honestly don't know the permit time for, for city encroachment for, uh, an approach. The building is six weeks before they even look at it. It sits in the bin for a building permit. But I don't know about the city, and I think you, you said you have a relationship with traffic?
Well, I'm sure Dr. Sarvas could talk to Mr. Armstrong and, and hopefully help the process along. I don't know how far we'd be able to, to push the review process ahead, but.
I, you know, I, I realize the advantages is that you're separating Community Academy traffic away from the Lacumbra traffic. One parking lot for one, one parking lot for others. So obviously there's an advantage there. But given the, the intensity of the comment that we had from neighbors, I'm really concerned about cars stacked up on Porta Suelo waiting to get in. And then I wonder if it's only a matter of time before parents try and maneuver two cars side by side just to try and make it happen because people are feeling a little pressured sitting out on, on Porta Suelo. Um, and then we've got, you know, liability claims, um, based on, on people trying to negotiate that entrance. Um, I'm, I'm really concerned about it. I, I don't know what else to say. Um, I know that this was premised on a particular start date and, and, um, I'm not trying to be an obstacle, um, but I am really deeply concerned. Having nothing really to do so much with the schools cooperating with one another as it is with, um, the neighbors, um, and the impact on, on Porta Suelo.
Well, I actually share those concerns, but I also want to hear from, uh, Ms. Alzina because I think, um, you have something, some light that you could shed on this as well?
Yes, 'cause I was concerned about the same thing. And because of that, do you want me to come up to the front too?
Yeah, it's easier for the, uh, the video operator.
I wasn't prepared to speak, so.
Yeah, go west one.
Um, I was concerned too about the traffic and just making the adjustment for the public too, as smooth as possible for everyone. So, um, I have scheduled a before-school fitness for all, for, and before-school music program available for all students. It's free of cost. And so that's an hour before school starts. And then a half an hour before school, school starts, we'll have a free breakfast program for all students. And then the bus will come fifteen minutes later and then we'll get, so I'm trying to stagger it when parents come. Um, I'm projecting to have about probably eighty students participate in the, I'm thinking forty and forty, just from last year's numbers that participated in the music program. And then forty parents, or forty students in the fitness for all. So that's eighty. So I'm thinking a third at a time will come in. So I just wanted to let you know that that's what I'm doing.
I have a question. Is there any way to have a drop-off area off of Porta Suelo rather than having to go into the parking lot, letting somehow teachers meet, for the few months, teachers meet the students?
Not, not really. What you could do is, is, is this area in here, when it doesn't conflict with Lacumbra, could also be used for drop-off. You know, if you ha, if you have staggered start times, uh, you could use this area for drop-off as rel, as well as this area. As we learned from Santa Barbara Junior High, parents learn real quick which area takes the longest and it kind of equalizes. I think Santa Barbara Junior High has three different areas to drop off students. And once the city took care of the, the, uh, Ortega Park on the back there and redid that, you know, things kind of averaged out amongst themselves. Uh, with, with staggering the start times between the schools, with staggering the start times within the school and, and having two areas available.
How much of a stagger is there when you're talking about, um, the academy? I, I don't think I saw the final times for the academy and Lacumbra. Is that on this? The, if the programming starts at the academy an hour earlier and first period or zero period starts at seven thirty at Lacumbra, I'm just sort of thinking out loud about how, how many cars can we expect to be coming in trying to use both lots?
Amy, do you recall the start times?
No, we, we kind of played around with it. Academy started maybe eight fifteen or eight ten.
As I recall, um, it was an hour early, is that seven ten? Are you talking about seven ten for those activities? Then zero period for Lacumbra is, uh, seven thirty. Uh, the primary start time, as I recall, was eight ten. The Lacumbra start time for first period was eight twenty. And the academy four through six start time was eight thirty.
I, I could tell you that if I was a parent, I would probably take, and I had an older child other than kindergarten one or two, I'd probably drive up Porta Suelo and drop off my student along the sidewalk up here by the, uh, baseball diamond and let them walk down the sidewalk and into school. And I imagine that will be happening.
Which, again, will impact the residents on the street.
But it would, it would spread it out along the street. And I, I can, I can see that, that's, that's an area where, where there's not a lot of street parking. Uh, you don't see cars parked on the street there.
Then the children have to walk in front of that, across that driveway entrance.
It is a sidewalk. Hopefully, when people turn from a street into a driveway, they're looking at the sidewalk, especially at a school, to see if there's students walking on the sidewalk. Hopefully, they're on the sidewalk and not in the street.
Well, are we gonna have any plans, especially if, if we go ahead with moving the school before the, the driveway is completed? Um, are there any plans to have additional staff around in that area during, it seems like we'd have to go pretty much for an hour at least, um, maybe an hour and a half from about seven or seven fifteen until eight thirty or so, um, to sort of provide some sort of safety for the, for the students and maybe a little bit of traffic management for the cars?
At, at all of our elementary sites, that's left to the discretion of the principal and their staffs. And I know at Washington, uh, I've been out there, I've seen, I've seen staff out there helping with traffic control. Uh, I'm not that familiar with a lot of the other sites on, on what they do. Uh, I know McKinley, uh, uh, has staff out in the parking lot, uh, during drop-off. Uh, I'm not sure what some of the other schools do.
Well, I know that, I mean, I, I think that because this is a, a slightly, well, maybe not even so slightly, um, unusual situation for a school, a configuration. It's not like the other campuses really. That maybe as a district, we could take a more proactive approach to helping to generate that kind of uh, security or, or assistance rather than leaving it up to just the individual schools. And I know that the police department had, works with us for the safe routes to school and the cross, crossing guards, et cetera. And I'm wondering if maybe we could work with them to try to provide, even if it's only for the first half a year when the, uh, parking situation is in flux, to provide some sort of assistance in that way.
You know, they, they can't keep their crossing guards staffed at the regular schools, so. I don't know. To me, this just sounds dangerous.
Well, you're right. We do have to have adults out there. I think we have that in the principal's job description, don't we?
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm more than sure that the principal, as well as probably every teacher, and there's classified staff available. At the academy, there's also a huge piece of their program that's around parent participation, so. And every parent has to put in so many hours for participation. I can, I can see that probably there's gonna be all kinds of hours in the beginning that parents put in, whether it counts toward that or not, just to help this piece go forward. Regardless of how we do this.
Any other board comment? I don't know if you have any other comments, Dr. Sarvas and Mr. Hattjunk.
I, I had, I had another question because, Mr. Hattjunk, you indicated that we're already running into a time crunch by the mere fact that we're discussing this on July tenth. And we're expressing, as board members, we're expressing some concern about approving this with, approving the move without the driveway being completed. And I'm wondering if maybe Ms. Alzina could address what difficulties um, it might pose if we did not approve this tonight? And, and Mr. Hattjunk, you may want to address that too in terms of construction times, et cetera.
As far as a start date of the school or the move, 'cause we've got two different things going. If we start any later than July thirtieth, their year-round schedule with intercession is completely down the drain. I mean, as you know, the year-round school started today, Cleveland, so typically they would have stayed, started. This is the last possible day they can start. And what they're doing is they're knocking off a few days of each one of the intercessions, a week or more. And so they have two-week intercessions. And so they kind of catch up. They're going a little bit later in the year than they normally would, but they're making it work, so they have those intercessions in place.
So I guess my question would be then, um, if we just didn't move the school until later in the year?
I think the question, uh, isn't whether we move that, uh, end of July start date, but simply whether we maintain the school here. And that would be until after winter break.
Does that impede the construction?
So, that's what Amy needs to address.
That, that would not impede the construction. It would just mean that they would start with their students still here. It, it, uh, the, the students that occupy these rooms uh, could anytime during the year move up to the upstairs when they're ready. And, and, and leaving these open, uh, based on traffic, you could move one grade level. You could wait till all the parking lots done. We can come back with a report on, on what traffic is there now with a staggered start. And you may want to add one grade level and see what happens and, and watch the traffic. And, or you may want to wait until the, uh, complete driveway is done. That's totally at the option of the board. Uh, I, I think we want to start on July thirtieth. The, the option would be that, that we tell the parents that they're starting at this campus with the same grade configurations that existed last year.
Well, as reluctant as I am to do it, I really think that that's the direction that I'm leaning in, um, to continue with, you know, moving forward with the actual changes that need to take place in the classroom. It sounds like those would, would occur anyway. I'm fine with you proceeding with, uh, making purchases to make that happen. It's, it's this parking lot that, that is, that is the, you know- It's this parking lot that is the, you know, the deal breaker for me. In addition to which, we don't have any information from the city about the permit process. I think if I had that information, that, you know, I might be coaxed in one direction or another. But, I mean, I'd be open to bringing it back at an August meeting if we had some new information about the parking lot. But right now, that is, you know, sort of the, you know, hold firm kind of option for me because of the entrance to that parking lot. I don't know how other board members are feeling.
Well, it seems to me if we start the academy at this site, it wouldn't make sense to move them or to have any really further discussion about their movement until an intercession. Wouldn't make sense to, you know, start that discussion in August about...
Although they have an intercession in October, you know. And I'm assuming if we had more information from the city between now and August.
Typically, we don't pull the permits with the city, the contractors do. So this is in a case where we would work with the city because of the design time to expedite that process. And in this case, we as a district may want to pull the permit for the contractor to expedite the process. I mean, if we pull the permit, then hopefully the contractor bids a lesser amount because they don't have to pull the permit.
Okay.
Hopefully.
We have one public commenter.
Do you want to speak about?
Start dates.
I hear your concerns with the parking. My concern is we've changed our start date to July 30th and the parents are thinking, oh, good, we're going to be together. It's a possibility that maybe not one grade level, but okay, I'm finding childcare, extra childcare, you know, last minute. I'm just afraid what it's going to do to our numbers and our enrollment and just parents just frustrated with the academy and what's going on, not understanding the whole process because it's been, we're working on now nine years. So I just want to let you know that that's going to be a concern of many of our parents and a frustration more than anything amongst teachers too and staff and just really anxious more than anything to be together, being split again. That means we're going to be split, having staff meetings back and forth. It's just really hard. We have two new teachers coming on board. I had to let go two or attempts, so. And combination classes that we have, you know, just everything, you know, that's just affecting our school. So, again, I know the parking is an issue. I, you know, I have after-school programs for all my at-risk students and also proficient and advanced students until 5:30. So I know after-school pickup isn't going to be an issue either. I just don't see the traffic as an issue and as a problem. And, you know, I'll be, I'll be out there dealing with the traffic and I know parents will be out there. We already have an active PTA where they're already prepared, they're having identified green shirts that if a parent has any questions, you go and talk to that person. You know, we have a team already established. So again, I don't, I don't see these as issues and as a problem because I know that we're going to make it work. And just like the move, we're going to make everything work. And it's difficult, but again, we'll make it work. So I just wanted to put in my two cents there.
It seems like it would help that you would be starting the school year off by yourself there without the Lacumbra having started. So for the first month anyways, it'll be just the academy.
That's a great point. It gives us, it gives us an opportunity to actually work out the glitches without another school being there. And that is a good point, yeah.
And so it's really, the issue is mostly from the end of August until your break, your intercession break in October.
It's, our intercession break is the last week in September and then the first week in October.
Starts September 24th, Monday.
So it's about a month in there where there's a problem.
And then afterwards too, this is not going to...
Well, yeah, it could be, but it's possible that something may get resolved in that between time.
Right.
It's possible, but...
So it'd be a month of just being out there.
I'm Lane Wheeler from the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I'm the president. And I'd like to see this plan be as successful as possible, and I really think the board is taking full deliberation and using their combined intelligence to ferret out the problems here. Two items that I did want to remind the board of, and I'm sure you're already aware of this, contract stipulates a nine-hour adjunct duty responsibility for teachers. And it would be nice to see how the nine hours are going to be laid out for the course of the school year in advance of using up your nine hours in the first three or four weeks of school by having every teacher out there to be responsible for traffic. I'm also not sure that we want our education professionals being police officers or traffic control people. I'm not sure that's the best use of resources. The second item is one that Dr. Robertson and I have been already discussing, but it's one that concerns me because our contract states that the year-round schools are beginning on July 9th, which was two days, or yesterday. And over a month ago, in May, I cautioned Ms. Alzina about the need for a memo of understanding on any kind of a change in the contract, which changing the starting date is a change in the contract. She acknowledged that she understood the issue. Now, a month and a half has gone by and I've been in the office every day and I've yet to hear from Ms. Alzina about a request for a memo of understanding regarding a change in the starting date. Dr. Robertson and I fortunately have had several conversations about this, and I think she understands the need for this, but I want to call to your attention also that principals cannot act independently and unilaterally to change the contract. And this seems to be an issue that I would think would be fairly simple to understand, but it seems to alluded this in this situation. I realize there's a lot of pressures to try to get started, and I'm more than willing to understand that, but when you've been once warned and twice reminded, it seems pretty unconscionable to me to not have at least made an overture that, hey, I realize this is a condition and we need to address it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Wheeler.
Just a quick comment, and we'll make sure that's addressed. We wouldn't expect teaching staff to be out on parking lot duty though. You know, this is a school that's known for its parental involvement and community action. Sometimes I think it's the Community Action Academy. So, and this is the kind of thing that schools do. They resolve problems and I expect that this school would work through this, whatever issues arise, and that it would not become a problem.
I mean, I just want to reiterate, it's not that I don't have faith in the schools working it out. There was another component to this and it was the neighborhood component as well. And that's the piece that probably concerns me the most. I have, you know, lots of faith in the community academy parents to be able to, you know, make their best shot at controlling traffic and controlling, you know, young pedestrians. But I'm still really concerned about, you know, stack-ups on Porta Swello while that driveway is being resolved. Okay, further discussion, questions? I don't know if Mr. Hattjung or Dr. Sarvis has anything to add?
Well, our agenda item is for approval of the allocation of space and the timeline. You may want to take those as one item or two separate items and give us some direction.
Okay, thank you. Shall we move forward first with approving the site plan to co-locate Santa Barbara Community Academy at Lacumbra?
Move to approve the site plan?
Second. So we have a motion from Ms. Parker, a second from Ms. Malikoff. All those in favor of approving the site plan for the co-locations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have the timeline, and it sounds like the big issue is the July 30th start date versus completion of the parking lot entrance or at least some further information about the permitting process that might bring us to the intercession perhaps or, it looks like right now it would be winter break based on the timeline that we've got now.
I guess for me, even if I got further information in August, it's still a safety issue for me of that should be done, that the cars need to be able to go back and forth. There shouldn't be temptations for parents to drop kids off on the street. There shouldn't be backups onto Porta Swello. There shouldn't be places where young students, junior high students, might be crossing in front of start cars that are impatient and backed up. So because of that, I would move to approve the move of the community academy to the Lacumbra site when the parking lot entrance is completed.
Is there a second for that? I'm free to, I will second it. So that's Parker and Harder. All those in favor of that?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to comment on, or have a question about the motion, or I guess a comment on the motion. I'm concerned, I'm really, really torn on this one because I have the same concerns about the safety issues, but, and I'm, I'm concerned with just leaving it up to parents to patrol that area because parent, if we leave it up to parents, it basically means we're at the mercy of volunteers. And people, by, I mean, by definition, a volunteer doesn't have to do this. So, I am, but I'm also very concerned about the fact that this has been a decision that has been going kind of back and forth for so long that the academy parents and the Lacumbra parents have really been sort of on tender hooks for a long time. And it seemed as though we had finally made a decision and given the academy parents a very specific plan. And now, less than a month before they're supposed to start school, we're changing that plan. And that makes me very uncomfortable for those, for those families.
Actually, just chiming in there because I think you missed the meeting where we did this.
I did, yes.
And that was, that it was a July 30th start date with a move sort of predicated on the site being ready. So that, I felt like that was clear at our meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was clear, but apparently not everyone walked away with the same understanding. But once again, there have been communications amongst the community academy parents and the principal, et cetera, so they may have had a very different understanding of what I had.
Well, I would like to address your question about whether we just leave this to volunteers. We would not. We'd put a plan together, and Ms. Alzina would put a plan together with the, with the school community, and they would figure out how to do this. If we ran into problems, we'd hire someone who had the authority. I mean, that's, the typical problem you run into with a voluntary system is if someone isn't continuing to take responsibility for it, it can fall apart. So we would simply have to make sure that happened, whether it meant that we would hire someone to do that.
Well, I would be inclined to support moving the campus now with a commitment from, if we had a commitment from the district to hire somebody to do it, because I really don't want to leave it up to volunteers. And even, even if it were the teachers and the principals, well, not so much the principals, but certainly the teachers, it would be sort of an adjunct duty that I would feel uncomfortable. Even the classified staff, it would seem to be something that we're adding on to their duties that I'm not sure, I would want to rely on just their willingness to do that. But, so I guess, I mean, the bottom line for me is I, I want to move ahead with moving the campus because I think that's what we've, for whatever reason, what parents have come to believe is going to happen. But I would also want to make sure that we take very proactive steps to make, to ensure the safety of the students while this construction is going on.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. So all those in favor of Ms. Parker's motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. We need a new motion then?
Well, I guess I'll move to approve the start date of July 30th at the new, at the Lacumbra site with the stipulation that the district provide staff or personnel to monitor the safety of the students in the parking structure, in the parking area.
For how long?
Until the parking lot is completed.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. So we have a stalemate. We either need more information or another board member or something different.
Shall I spend my mornings over there?
If I may, Dr. Sarvis, I would assume that if the board doesn't take any action on the timeline, that the way we operate now would prevail. So if the board doesn't take any action on a movement of a timeline, I would assume that we would continue with the preparation of the rooms and by default, where the academy is housed now is where they stay. I may be wrong, but...
Yes, although in the, of course, we don't have the minutes from that meeting. But in the motion from that meeting, we were anticipating moving the entire school over and starting at the end of July.
I think it was up to, it was sort of at your discretion whether, if I remember, was the way it was put.
Was it?
And so it would still be at your discretion.
I actually thought that it was, the motion was that it came back for approval of the plan and the timeline at our next, the next possible meeting.
Well, somewhere we must have a record of what the motion was.
The problem is we don't have written minutes from that meeting yet, so it's not a question of being able to go online and look it up.
I do have a major issue though. I have a three, four combo this year. So currently, third grade is over here and currently, fourth through sixth grade is over there. So, and I have...
I actually, from the, I don't have any problem with moving the third grade over to Lacumbra. You know, if you're talking about a couple of classrooms, I don't have an issue with that, and I'm sure that Mr. Hattjung would have the classrooms ready by July 30th.
Would that be a helpful compromise to move the third grade and leave K through second at this site until the parking lot was ready?
That would be helpful. It would give the parents something, it would give the teachers something. My concern would be that the teachers wouldn't have to move twice.
Right.
So my concern would be that the, because the third through sixth grade wing is going to be upstairs, so I would want them to move upstairs.
I don't think that that part's an issue. I don't think that's the issue at all.
They will start upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah, and I understand your point.
Okay.
I have no problem with the third grade being over there. Shall we make a motion that the third, somebody make a motion that the third grade start at that site on July 30th?
Can I ask one more question in terms of the, just, in terms of kindergarten? Was the playground structure moving over or was it?
The playground structure that is out back here?
Yes, when was that going to...
Would move over.
But when is that going to be completed?
That would be August 29th. We probably want to delay that beings that that structure is primarily used by K2 students and they're not moving right away, so we would delay that move a little bit so they can use it here and not be without...
Well, yeah, it seems like whatever you're going to do to move here, you'd want to do that.
And those students not being able to use it.
Well, even now, moving them there when they're, when they can't use it for a month. Anyway, it hopefully wouldn't take quite so long to move it.
Yeah, the lower grades use that. The bonus is the upper grades, you know, have a grass area and don't have to travel to Ortega Park anymore.
Is there anything else like that where, I don't know, there, it makes any sense to move one, the first grade or whatever? Does it make any difference or, never know? Does it make any difference, or never mind?
I personally, I personally think it, it's a good split. It, it gives us a little bit more breathing room, because we were on a tight schedule. And so from facilities' point of view, uh, it's, I feel even more comfortable with the schedule we've developed. I mean, we were, we were aggressive, uh, we, we didn't do anything we felt was not attainable, but, uh, but we were pulling out all the efforts, so.
Okay, so I'm, I move that we move the third through sixth grade and start them at Lacumbra site on July 30th. And that the other grades, uh, move over as soon as the parking lot is completed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Okay, so there's a 4-0 on that one. So some movement in the right direction, Ms. Alzina.
Thank you.
And then, I, I mean, I certainly, you know, don't, I don't want to take board action on this, but maybe we want to look into pulling that permit ourselves as opposed to waiting on a contractor.
Well, you know, well, myself and, and Joe Wilcox and Steve Flowers will meet with the city and have discussions on what is the best way, uh, to do that.
Okay, great.
Now that we have approval to move forward, we'll start doing that.
And then maybe we can get a report back on that activity in the superintendent's bulletin?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alzina. Okay. Life is always complicated. We are on to item E2, which is approval of application for fundraising activity for synthetic, synthetic turf and track resurfacing at San Marcos High School.
I'll have Dave Hetjank, our director of facilities and operations, introduce this, and we have members of the staff from San Marcos High School presenting on the issue.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, board members. A couple of months ago, uh, San Marcos staff and, and boosters met with facilities' personnel as far as the idea of fundraising for synthetic surface, uh, at Valley Stadium at San Marcos High School. This is not a, a new idea. You may remember Mo Clayton from San Marcos High School. I've had discussions about this with him in the past. At the time, we redid the track, we discussed it. It was just a matter of funding. With synthetic turf, it, uh, it's not just the turf that's important, it's the system underneath to make sure that it has proper drainage to get the water out. And then synthetic turf is not maintenance-free, you do have to do some maintenance. The surface is being proposed is similar to that at City College. We've met with, uh, Mr. Ed Holdren and Abe, and, 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 uh, I've had talks with people in the industry. This would not have a impact on any district budget. It would solely be a fundraising. If they raised the money, we would proceed with the project for the synthetic turf. If they raised even more money, we would proceed with the sub, the, the project for resurfacing the track. The group has done their homework. They've hired Steve Flowers, uh, and associates as their civil engineer. Mr. Flowers has done a lot of work with the district. He's, uh, familiar with district requirements and standards, and, and it's an excellent civil engineering firm, as there are many, so we were, we were pleased that they agreed to use Mr. Flowers. Like I say, they, they've done investigation, they've talked with, uh, people in the industry and, and have picked out the turf that they want. And so I will let Mr. Ed Holdren, uh, talk to you about his fundraising plans, unless you have any other questions of me.
Can I ask a question? Uh, the maintenance for this thing, uh, is it require, what does it require of us from the future?
Well, it would, it would basically be the site gardeners. It, it's mainly, uh, re-raking the, the, uh, material that is in the turf to, to keep it level and, and making sure that it doesn't ball up and, and, and have any voids or divots. So, and there are, there's equipment that is made by the manufacturer that helps with this process that would be part of the purchase of the synthetic turf. So, uh, it would reduce the requirement of manpower as far as the site gardeners on site. They'd be doing some maintenance on the field. It would be a lot less than what they're currently doing with repairing sprinklers, mowing, gopher controls, squirrel control, uh, and, and things of this nature.
And, and is, uh, training the groundskeepers, uh, part of the package, you know, training them to use this equipment?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Uh, I know in Ventura, they have a, the, um, synthetic turf, I believe, at Ventura High School. And they had a problem with, uh, students burning things into the, into it, and it,
That was one, that was one of the main things when we did our, when we did our tracks. I'm, I mean, if somebody really wants to damage something, they can do it. They can go out to our synthetic tracks and probably create some type of a fire. I shouldn't say this on camera. They can probably create some type of a fire that's gonna damage an area.
Except that it's been done on, on turf before as well on our high school campuses.
And, and, and basic, basically, it's, uh, it's something that is repairable. It is an expense to repair it, and, and once it became district property, uh, the, the maintenance department would bear the expense of repairing that. But, uh, the advantages is that, that now you have a field that can be used more readily by the school. Uh, San Marcos High School has basically a shortage of turf area. And as you know, during football season and soccer season, and with the school and community use, there's a high demand for that field and that stadium. To have synthetic turf means that you don't have to have that area set aside to rejuvenate, that people can use it year-round, which makes, which means that their other turf areas will have a little less use. And you, I would hope that as a result of this, the, the baseball field and, uh, outfield's and the softball field outfield's look a little better because a lot of things that typically have to take place out there could now take place in the stadium because you're not ruining the turf, uh, in that part of the field. So, uh, from a facilities' point of view, i- it's definitely an advantage. Even, even, uh, with, with maybe having to do a, a little different type of repair or a more expensive repair, overall, district-wide, uh, the gardeners can address other things on-site to help keep that site looking good.
Can it be used in the rain?
It can be used in the rain, yes. Uh, uh, that, that system is designed to take the water off the field and, and into the drainage. So you, you can, you probably play in the rain a little bit better on that field than you would on, on turf. But I'll let the, uh, experts on that address that question.
Could, could I ask one quick more question before we get to more about the turf? I just have a quick board policy question, because when I was looking at, at, um, board policy on major fundraising, it was, the, what I could find was, um, when you're doing major fundraising, to supplement district funds. And I didn't see anything, I couldn't see a board policy just on fundraising for major projects like this when they're, when it's not, uh, coordinated with district funds. Is there a board policy?
We've been following the same policy. What we did when we had a fundraising activity by Dos Pueblos High School to fundraise for the, uh, a track resurfacing. Uh, that was a successful project where, in fact, either they raised the money and they didn't. If they raised the money, we did the project. It's kind of the same thing as the theater seats at Santa Barbara High School. Either the site would have the money to fund that, or a majority of that when the project started or not. Uh, in, in this case, uh, the site would, would have to come back to the board with a report on, on, based on your approval, tentative approval, and based on your timelines and your conditions, you're free to set whatever guidelines, boundaries, rules that you wish as far as something like this.
Yeah, did you, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Holdren.
So you've, you've stolen some of my thunder. But that's okay. Uh, I, I did, uh, you know, pardon me, I'm going to read this, as I just felt I could be more organized. Uh, my name's Ed Holdren, and I'm a '63 graduate of San Marcos, so that was a long time ago. I'm chairman of the Field Turf Committee for Valley Stadium. I've been involved with youth sports activities for more than 40 years in the community. And I currently help my son, Dare Holdren, as head football coach. I help him coach over there, so at 62, I'm one of the oldest coaches on campus. I'm here also with Abe Jehotamy, who's the athletic director at San Marcos High School. And, uh, as Dave mentioned, uh, Steve Flowers, Flowers and Associates will be our engineer. Uh, over the past 12 months, the San Marcos High School gymnasium and weight room have undergone a much-needed renovation. And I understand the swimming pool's online for something in the next 12 months. We believe it is time for our grass playing fields to have the same kind of attention. For the past 45 years, the Valley Stadium turf has undergone its annual change from a relatively decent grass field, and I invite you to go over there right now, it's beautiful. And unfortunately, it's beautiful because nobody's played on it for four months. Anyway, it's, uh, it's, it's annual change from a relatively decent grass field in September to a beat-up dust bowl in the spring. Uh, the annual change also happens, uh, on the other playing fields we have. And if you're aware of what goes on over there, we do not have a large area for playing fields, and staying off the stadium highly impacts the baseball field and the, and the girl softball field. As a matter of fact, the girl softball field right now is, uh, there's not much grass. And so, uh, our goal is to raise a million one, and this will allow us to replace the current grass field in Valley Stadium with an astroturf type of material. We are here tonight to ask for permission to begin this fundraising endeavor. We know the district has no funds to support this, but we also feel it's very important to create this new field for increased safety, better environmental standards, and a much increased use by students and the general public. Why do we want to accomplish this? Currently, three football teams at San Marcos High School and the Dos Pueblos High School varsity football, which we know they're moving, but they're still playing part of their games this year at Valley Stadium. Six soccer teams, the band, physical education classes, all play and practice on the baseball and softball fields throughout the fall and winter to preserve the playing surface in Valley Stadium for games and some practices under the lights. The wear and tear on these playing surfaces, along with the wear and tear in the stadium, results in the majority of the grass being destroyed by springtime. If a winter happens to be particularly wet, the results are compounded. After the completion of the annual sports, the fields are shut down for three or four months to allow for recovery. This annual scenario can be altered, altered in a very positive way with the addition of the field turf. The benefits. We would now have, eh, with the installation of the field, a high-quality, all-weather field available 365 days a year. The stadium field is now used between 120, 140 days a year. That's, that's the use, and no greater, because if it's, and especially if it's a wet year, then it's, it's, it just tears it up. Less wear and tear on baseball and softball fields as teams can practice in the stadium without worrying about destruction of grass surface. Safety is an important part of this. Uh, reduced risk of injuries on all fields, and I've got pamphlets if you choose to see them about some of the safety items. Mud holes, bear spots, clumps of grass, gopher holes will all disappear in the stadium, and less activity on the underfields will improve their surfaces. Traction from a sports medicine standpoint is better, uh, on field turf. Shock attenuation properties are much better than on grass fields. As a matter of fact, the studies show there's a reduced, uh, field turf reduces neural injuries by 55% and cranial cervical injuries by 45%. Uh, in addition, our grass fields for softball and baseball can be better maintained, suffer less abuse from constant play, and therefore also be safer for those activities. Rainy day practice surface for spring sports is something we can do now. If it happens to rain, the baseball team can go down onto the astroturf, the girl softball team can go over there, and again, we're not tearing up the other two fields. Physical education classes can more utilize the stadium, obviously. Uh, greater opportunities because of the greater number of days for more community groups to enjoy the stadium field, including Special Olympics, the youth football program, community soccer groups, band competitions, and other activities. I talked to Abe about, school may, um, is looking at possibly have, ultimately lacrosse may be coming. Environmental benefits. Reduction in field fertilizers and pesticides. Saving over 200,000 gallons of water per year. Turf materials are made from recycled materials and are recyclable themselves. Reduction in yearly maintenance costs to school district. No sprinkler irrigation maintenance required, no mowing or striping required, no squirrel or gopher control required. Uh, the economic benefit from that is, and again, I've got a couple of studies if you'd like to see them. Uh, the estimates are between 75 to $90,000 a year for your average grass field that's using labor, uh, fertilizers, uh, time spent, lining, mowing, et cetera. And with the turf field, the, the expenses annually would be somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000. The product we have selected, field turf, in conjunction with Brock, a subsurface drainage material, will make the Valley Stadium field one of the top fields in America. Field turf is currently played on at seven NFL football stadiums. The product is installed in 36 NCAA Division One football stadiums, including Nebraska, University of Nebraska, University of Washington, Air Force, Wisconsin, Missouri, and on and on and on. Over 450 high schools in America utilize field turf. These include Matter Day, Loyola Los Angeles, Torrey Pines, Valley Christian, San Inez, West Covina High School, and a number of others. I would like to conclude with this, uh, little quote that was in one of the brochures. Says, "The proof is in the performance." We had five Pop Warner teams, this is a quote, by the way. Our varsity and JV, uh, soccer and football teams, the marching band and PE classes, all using the field at Half Moon Bay High School. Even with the intense use, the field made it through the Bay Area's wettest winter on record with flying colors. So I, I think it's, the advantages speak for themselves, um, and I welcome any questions.
Timeline, Mr. Holdren. I realize it's the kind of thing that could stretch on because-
I'm the eternal optimist, so I hope next, uh, year from now, uh, the field's tore up and we're under construction.
Okay. And, but you understand that we wouldn't be doing, moving toward that until the, uh, I think 75% of your goal was met?
That's what, uh, Dave told me, yes.
Okay, okay. And I know that you're an expert fundraiser. Other board questions?
Uh, there's a turf at UCSB, the one that's on the soccer field.
Yes.
Um, I don't know, some, a parent wrote me an email about that there's a problem with it because of there's little crumbs that are kind of coming up through the bottom. This isn't the same type, is it, or the same-
All of them have crumbs. What, what it is, it's a, a two-and-a-half inch blade of grass, and then they infill it with, uh, little rubber pellets. So, uh, they all are manufactured that way. So those are the crumbs you're referring to. And I don't know what the problem is about with the crumbs, but, uh-
I wish I remembered what their complaint was.
I've, I've actually been on one of these things. I wonder if the parent thinks that the crumb is some, is evidence of some sort of breakdown when in fact, it's supposed to be there.
I believe if I remember, they were, that their child was allergic to them or something. I, I don't remember, I'm sorry. And it was a health issue, but I couldn't-
Well, I don't think it really is any different than if you were tackled on the field in a mu, in a, in a, you know, in, you know, pool of mud.
Yeah, you're getting it all over you.
You'd be getting a mouthful of mud, and, and I, I happen to know, when we played at Buena last year, that some of the kids, yeah, you, you, you can stir it up if you really impact it hard. The stuff moves around, and that's one, one of the issues. You asked, someone asked a question about how often you maintain it. Uh, they recommend every four to six weeks, you go out and you, you have this dragging device that redistributes the material. And then they recommend that typically, once a year, you go out and, uh, they actually have a service that you can, you can hire to come in, and it kind of fluffs it up, as you will.
So you're balancing grass allergies versus rubber or whatever this material is?
Yeah, I can't remember what it was. And they, and they said it was particular to UCSB that most places don't use that particular product, and so that's why I was asking whether it was the same company.
I don't know about all the products, but I know about the, the numbers that I researched, the majority of them have, City College has an infill.
They actually may have said it was okay at, at City College, but not okay at UCSB. But I, I couldn't tell you, I'm sorry.
Need to talk about the product and, and going to bid as well.
If, if I may, uh, and Mr. Holdren's well aware of this. What we do is we take the fundraiser's preference and use that as our standard when we put the project out to bid. And we have to follow the public contract code. If a contractor proposes a different product, and that product is in fact an equal, then we are obligated to allow them to substitute for that equal. The, the catch is that it truly has to be an equal, and that's what we have architects and engineers to help us evaluate. Is this product truly an equal or is it not? This Chubbsit came up, uh, with the gym floor at San Marcos High School. The contractor proposed a substitution, the subcontractor, and claimed it was an equal. And we had, uh, three meetings. In fact, we involved legal counsel. After we had, uh, denied the substitution, that it was not an equal, uh, they asked for a hearing. I held the hearing, I was the hearing officer, I conducted the hearing, I brought testimony, I concluded and, and, and wrote the opinion that in fact, uh, the architect was correct, that the product was not an equal, and it ended there. So sometimes people, people can be very zealous when, with their product, thinking it's an equal, when in fact, uh, you have to look at not only the, the, what the product is, what it's made out of, how it's maintained, its longevity, its performance. All of those things are part of determining an equal. So even though we are specifying a specific product, there is not 100% assurance that that's the product that will be installed at the end of the day.
How about the CMAS issue?
Uh, this, this product is available, uh, on CMAS, which is the purchase, so, you know, we may, as a district, choose to go with, uh, uh, the fundraising group giving us the- a district, choose to go with the fundraising group giving us the money to purchase the field and then have another contractor install the field. We have to look and see at the time that the fundraising is complete, what that CMA's price is, and is it the best way to go?
Is the board aware of the state CMA's list?
One, two.
Well, Dave, I'll have you explain that to them.
The CMA's are basically, it's like a piggyback bid, where vendors have contracted with the state, the state has put out solicitations for bids, they've awarded contracts, and then we are able to purchase off of those contracts. We don't do it too much in facilities, but we do do it sometimes in purchasing. If you were going to purchase tables, chairs, mostly furniture and equipment is what's available over CMA's versus construction-type activities.
We see it with modular buildings more often than not.
And correct. And computer routers, things like that.
I was very negative, but I want to say that this is a very positive thing, and that this will alleviate a lot of problems. I'm sure that San Marcos has a lot of tension between different groups wanting to use that field, and I see this as a wonderful solution to that. So I didn't, and I want to make a motion, we're ready, to approve the application for fundraising activity for the synthetic turf and track resurfacing at San Marcos High School.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so Mallacotta and Parker, any further discussion?
So I'm just wondering if we put a date to that or not?
They wouldn't be doing anything, they wouldn't be changing anything until the fundraising goal had been met. So you can say, you can indicate a report back perhaps, choose a date with a report back?
Well...
If you look at their, pardon me for interrupting.
Sure.
Far beyond me to interrupt you. If you look at their fundraising application, they have stated on their application as the fundraising deadline is February 1st, so maybe you'd like a report back sometime around February on how they're doing.
Great.
That would be great, thanks. Maybe mid-February.
Can I amend the motion to include that? Does it need to, or shall we?
I'll just add that to my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Then all those in favor of approving this item with a report back by February 1st, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes for zero. Thank you very much. Okay, now we are on to item E3, approval of fundraising activity for matching funds for Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy.
Well, we've only just begun on fundraising activities tonight. This next is an exciting project as well, and this is more in the educational arena. So, Dave, tell us about this one. We have Amir Abu Shair here who will be speaking to the issue as well.
Yes, Proposition 1D, which is providing our state matching fund for our last two modernization projects, our ADA upgrades at Dos Pueblos High School and our upgrades for La Quest at Santa Barbara High School, also provided money for career technical education. Proposition 1D provided up to 300, excuse me, up to 500 million for career technical education on a 50/50 match basis, with a maximum of 3 million for new construction projects. Amir has met with district staff, we've met with Joe Wilcox out on site to see where a proposed building might take place. He is well aware of the requirements, the timelines, there are two funding cycles. Amir wishes to get permission from you so he can apply for funds during that first cycle. We plan on applying for funds during the second cycle for the same type of project with our kitchen at Santa Barbara High School for the vocational part of that project. So I'm grateful to Amir for doing all this legwork to help me with that, when that comes up. He's done his homework. The main part now is, is to finish the CTE plan and proceed with the fundraising. The problem is that there's a timeline, and we wanted to bring this to the board as soon as possible. We don't have a board meeting the second Tuesday of this month, so we bring it to you now before Amir has finalized his CTE plan, and I know he wishes to discuss this with you, but I'd say from a facilities' point of view, it's a doable project, there's room on site to put the building. Amir's project will probably be in excess of $6 million, which is, you know, 50, the maximum match is $3 million. So based on fundraising, the project could be larger, it could be scaled back down, that's yet to be decided, but as with all fundraising activities, we do need board approval before we start, and from a facilities' point of view, we support this proposal. So Amir?
Good evening. So I'm here, obviously, to talk about the fundraising that we had mentioned, but in order to even do the fundraising and pursue a grant, what we actually needed to do is we needed to develop a career technical education plan for the academy. And I do realize the kind of absurdity of trying to go after this sum of money in this amount of time, but I look at this as really initiating a process that needs to happen anyway, in order to, you know, grow the academy. So the situation is that when career technical education standards and frameworks were approved, they have developed this process where you need to have a career technical education plan, and this is very new, and no one really has these plans. And so I've been educating myself, when I found out about the grant, to determine what is necessary to define yourself as a career technical education program under the new regulations and framework standards, et cetera, and realized that we needed to have that in order to apply for this grant. So what I have already submitted to you is a draft copy of the career technical education plan, which I developed. The thing that's a little bit odd is that normally what's supposed to happen is that this plan is supposed to be pre-approved by a career technical education advisory committee, and then after that committee approves it, then it would be brought to the board to have it also approved. But because of the timeline, and because of the summertime, and when you are having your meeting, and when I found out about the grant, I was only able to create this draft plan, which what I'm asking for is an approval contingent upon the approval by the committee, where the committee would be made up of the board members as per ed code AD some stuff. Okay? So that's effective what I'm looking for, that's the first piece, is that this is the plan, and it's the plan that I would be taking to my committee. The only thing that I would see that would change would be details, but not the overall scope of the plan. We've already established the engineering academy, we've established it with industry support, and the idea is just to grow the academy, to offer it to a wider variety of students. Right now, it's a very narrow program. It was created that way, the grant actually specified an extremely academically rigorous program, and originally we wanted to expand the program to offer it to more students. We can't do that, we can barely sustain the program as it is, and the reason is that when I was developing the program, I didn't really know what the scope of the program was. I was new to teaching, I had left industry, I came in, and the plan, you know, the engineering academy grew to what it is. And now, we've outgrown what we can do with the students we currently have, and we also are turning away students left and right from all academic abilities, and we don't even have the ability or the space to house them and to properly really meet what the career technical education standards have in place for engineering. One of the main reasons for that is that the facilities at Dos Pueblos regarding career technical education have slowly been converted to things like computer labs for other types of educational plans, but now with the success of the engineering academy, we'd like to bring that back to the school. And with the school completely filled, really looking at building a new facility with this opportunity, I just looked at it as, I'm going to at least try. I mean, I know it's a long shot, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not deluded in that sense. I mean, well, because what I'm really, what it really would mean is that we would apply for this grant, and we would have till October 31st to get $3 million matching, and I think that's a...
The truth is, Amir sees this as a competition, and you know what a competitor he is.
There you go. So, yeah, so that's the basis of the plan. I don't know exactly what you would need in terms of, if you have questions, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the background for what this plan is and why it is coming, and the rate that it's coming in is because, again, this was just brought to my attention, and I looked at it as really a good match when I really investigated it. We really are really doing career technical education at Dos Pueblos, and I would like to expand the opportunity to address the full student population instead of the narrow spectrum of students that we're currently serving.
I would agree with you that the fundraising portion of it is a long shot, although I don't want to underestimate your competitive spirit, but I really appreciate the fact that you're here articulating a vision for how this academy can be expanded, and I think you've got to get that vision out there before we can move into, in that direction, fundraising, bond, or otherwise.
Right.
So I appreciate that, and I'm only sorry that we don't have a bigger audience to, you know, to have reviewed your plan, and to be, you know, hearing what your vision is for what the engineering academy could be.
Thanks.
Other board members, questions?
I would just like to chime in that I really agree, I very much appreciate the direction that you're taking this in, and I sincerely hope you have great success over the next two or three months.
I appreciate it, and I do see this as really setting, using this opportunity as setting a foundation for moving forward with something, be it that we remodel facilities at Dos Pueblos. I mean, you know, there are issues where enrollment could drop, I mean, other things, but whatever it is, we're establishing the groundwork, and we're, I guess, matching in with what the state is really requiring in the career technical education, and there are a lot of career technical education goals that need to be met by, you know, all these dates, and I haven't memorized them, but we're in the process of really trying to align ourselves with that, so.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to say that I agree, I'm really happy with the idea of broadening it to a larger percentage of the campus. One of the concerns that we always have in the district is that a lot of our academies don't reflect the demographics of this student population. And so I thought, I was wondering if it would be helpful in your plan to have something specifically, you know, addressing that issue of the demographics. And I was wondering if you have anybody on, I looked at your committee membership, I was wondering if you, if any of these people are sort of outreach into the less represented populations in the, for the academy?
Currently, no on the board, on the members that I put there, what my intention is, and I've been working with other teachers at Dos Pueblos, the, what, actually, there's kind of two parallel things going on. There's a group of teachers at Dos Pueblos who serve the outreach, at-risk, sorry, population, and I'm actually working with them and saying to them, I have this proposal, they ultimately had a proposal to say in their, you know, they're at the very, you know, bottom of this right now, starting out, but their proposal was, how can we address these students? And what I said to them was, I'm going to go forward with this engineering program, and I think it would be a good match, and rather than reinvent the wheel, I'd rather take the skills that you guys have with these students and really work to support them in their core academics, but then add on to it this engineering focus to really give the students a relevant academic experience. And really what I like about the engineering academy, and what I've heard from so many students and seen, and, I mean, this is anecdotal in terms of the students that want to do the program, is that they look at it and they say, wow, this is something that I can see, you know, why the schooling relates to, you know, what I'm, you know, what I'm learning, the real world, the relationship. But the thing that, the problem is, is then they ask, well, can I do this? And right now, we have to say no because we are so narrow in our focus, and we can't really grow in breadth because then the courses get broken up and you've got six kids in each class. So, no, there's no one on the board, but my intention is to get those teachers on this board. I just really wrote, I was trying to load it with industry partners first, because that's actually what the state grant people are going to be looking at. Their critical thing is, do you have support from the industry sector that is associated with your grant? And if you don't, they're not going to fund it because they don't believe that the industry really has buy-in to the sector that you're addressing. So that's why it's so heavily loaded with industry partners, but ultimately, yes, I was going to bring in the other teachers that I've been working with, and they do have, you know, extensive experience with the at-risk and the disadvantaged students, and so they would be on that panel as well. And so that's how I would deal with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is the long shot part of it the state grant or the fundraising?
I, if, I haven't applied for state grants before, I mean, of this magnitude and in this way, but I have looked at kind of what I think the competition is and the total amount of grants that they're offering, and then looked at it by how much money is being offered in our region. And I would say that we are, our program is in place, it's been successful, I think that I've demonstrated, you know, the things that they're asking on the grant, a lot of these things, one thing that's nice about this plan is it was developed knowing what the grant questions were, so, I mean, I know what the grant questions are effectively. So the grant questions feed into this and back and forth. So this is actually going to really like play right into those questions. So I would say, I mean, the short answer is, I think that we have a good chance of getting the grant, but I think we have a low chance of trying to raise the matching 3 million unless some big donors are able to be, you know, cultivating, we can really talk with them and show them what we're doing, and if they're, I think if their, you know, mindset is that this engineering program is something they'd like to see happen in this community, and they could see that really the facility would allow us to do what we're doing already, but on a much grander scale and addressing, I mean, really be a school within a school, you know, 400 kids serving, you know, in the Dos Pueblos High School, then I think that we could do it, but it's a long shot.
If fundraising came to, for just a million or a million and a half, is that a possibility to do something with a lesser amount?
I don't know, my guess is, the way I'm designing, I'm going to write up the building plan, is to make it modular in scope so that we could file an appeal if we raised 2 million and I asked for 3 million, and I could say, can we build the machine shop and two classrooms, and not the machine shop and five classrooms, for example? So I'm hoping that it's that way, they're not clear, they're being about as opaque as they can be, I mean, in terms of their process, and I've talked to them as much as I can, they never get back to you. I actually drove up north to a conference with half-hour notice to find out some information and corner these people so I could ask them the questions because they wouldn't get back to me. And that's because of the timeline we're on, so.
Oh my gosh. We had in here some people who are interested in an engineering academy, if you may know that, and there were people interested in fundraising, and I would hope that they will see this and somehow will respond.
When was this?
It was part of a...
It was a construction academy.
Okay.
As well as engineering, but it was mostly geared toward the construction, but hopefully they'll...
Okay. Well, that's the hope, we're going to do the best we can, I just, so.
I actually have a question for Dr. Sarvis, based on your, based on your plan, and that's on page six of the plan, it's at the back. In the very last paragraph, it talks about being able to keep track of where students end up, and my question is, this strikes me as something we should be doing as a district, not something that we should be depending upon, you know, one teacher and one academy in the district to initiate, although that's very nice and commendable, but it seems to me this is something that we should be doing regardless.
When I, when I came to the district some six years ago, I was tracking students a year after graduation to see where they were, see what schools they were at, whether they were taking college, in fact, college courses, in fact, at the time, we discovered that 85% of our students, one year after graduation, were taking at least some college courses. What we didn't know is how few of them transferred from, from community college status, or in our case, City College, to a four-year institution, so we were a little too complacent about that, but it did cost some money to do that.
Okay.
So if we came forward with a proposal, we'd bring a price tag along with it. Before we, before we act on this item or consider action on this item, I think we should address two issues. One is that when Amir presents to community groups, other educational groups, people are continually impressed with his goal about involving as many female students as male students, and I think, Amir, it's worth your saying that tonight, so I'd like you to do that. Then, since this board is also always concerned about becoming obligated to some sort of a construction project in the event that the fundraising doesn't meet the actual design and bid amounts, then I think, Dave, we should have you address that issue of adequate funding and determination of that amount. I mean, we've had a lot of experience with that at this point. It hasn't all been good, but we have a lot of experience, and we've learned our lessons, and I think we've learned them well. Amir?
Okay. So with regards to diversity, and I think this is an important point, and I did put it in here specifically because it is addressed in the grant application, one of the things that's important to me and has been important is the diversity of the academy, and it has been hard to meet everything. I mean, I get the students in, when they come in at ninth grade, and I'm limited with the academic abilities that we are, that they come with, and from there, I really said, well, what aspect of diversity can I really truly address and have some success in? And it became apparent after my first year when we did the program, and I didn't, we didn't really do anything, we just said, here's a class, so everybody sign up for it. it. And the first day of class, I get there, I mean, it's a kind of a joke, I had the roster beforehand, but whatever, the first day of class, I get there, and there's two female students and 33 male students in my freshman class. And it was very obvious to me as a young teacher that this is something that needs to be solved, and I'd seen that firsthand as an, as a physical science major and as an engineering, later as an engineering major in the university, that there's, there are really a low number of females, disproportionately low, ridiculously, in the physical sciences and engineering. So what we've done is, we've actively gone out and we've recruited, and we've brought our female students that are in the program and had them meet with the younger students, and as a result, now that we're actually recruiting students and having them apply, this last year, the freshman class had 14 girls and 16 boys, and this upcoming year, the students we're bringing in, it's going to be 50/50, which is a huge change from three years, and I think it demonstrates, I mean, my commitment, and that if you really are aggressive and you're creative in your methods, you can come up with a way to convince people to go against, I mean, really, it was a societal issue, you know, the girls are looking at it going, engineering physics, that's not for me. And we brought it to them and said, yes, engineering physics, it's for you. You're going to want to do science, you're excited about it, let's not let it stop here, let's continue and take this on in through high school. And not with the goal of saying, you're going to be an engineer, but with this, with the goal of, let's expose the students to this, and let's give them the opportunity to have this education, and then let them make the choice, but at least they got to make that choice, and it wasn't made for them by society. So, that's, I guess, how I could speak to that. And so I would like to, we're going to aggressively approach that in the same manner, with the respect to the entire population. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Hetjank, I don't know if you want to talk about the finances.
As far as the financial part of this, we don't have a design yet, we don't have an architect yet. So as the fundraising progressed, we could use that, those funds to hire an architect to start a design, and then based upon the amount of fundraising and the matching funds, we would have a good idea as we go as to how large of a building we want designed, based on how we thought we would be doing with the funds. And you could also do a design that has alternates in the design, where if you know this upfront, that you're going to have probably a varied amount of money, you can have alternates in the bid to, to create a larger facility if money's available. Maybe when you get in with the design team, it's not just a building that is built larger, but maybe it's, it's three buildings, and you build one, two, or three in a complex. Those things haven't, haven't been established yet. But we know we have an area where facilities and the principal and Amir have agreed would be a good place to, to put the building, as indicated in the agenda item, between the portables and a parking lot. And it's one of the challenges of a design team, how do you design something when you don't know what your final budget is? You design it with alternates or modular or separate structures, and then when, once you have your fundraising more dialed in at the time of bid, then you know what you go out to bid for.
I can address a little more on that, too, with what I found from the state, if you want. You have a, you, once you secure the funding, you can put the funding on hold for a year while you develop the plan, and the reason they did that is they didn't want the, the districts to have to invest a bunch of money in an architect to submit the grant. So the grant really can be a conceptual drawing, and they're actually believing that that's what's going to happen. There are some districts that are way ahead of the curve and knew about this or whatever, and they've got their grant, you know, their money secured, and they've also got the, the plans already drawn up with the idea that they're going to make this happen. But I do think we still have a chance, and like I said, we can put the money off for a year and be developing it based on the money, and then go ahead and build it to that. And I think the design that we're going to go with is going to be something that will be modular in nature, in that there are critical components, for example, a manufacturing and assembly shop, and then there are subsequent things such as classrooms, et cetera, which we could, if we had to, teach those classes at somewhere else on the Dos Pueblos campus, and it wouldn't be the end of the world, it would be just nice to have them in the same, you know, co-located. So, that's the way I view it, is we really will, we'll scale the project with the money, and we're going to try to nail it at, at six million, obviously, but that would be the situation. I don't think we're going to go much over that, I think if anything, we're going to try to just stick with six million. I think it's already a pie in the sky, so. All right. So, I hope that helps.
Pie in the sky is good. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the fundraising activity for matching funds for Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy.
Can I, can I ask that you amend the motion to make it contingent upon the plan receiving approval from the Career Tech Education Advisory Council?
So amended.
Okay, so Parker and Malikoff. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Does that-
Come up to the microphone.
Does, does that motion approve the actual plan also? Because there needs to be somewhere in this record that we approved the career technical education plan, and I want to make sure that that-
That is my intention, that the board is approving the plan-
Okay.
And then the plan later will be approved by the, the Career Tech Advisory Council.
Okay. That's all I wanted, it's just, it sounded like we were talking about the fundraising, I want to make sure we're talking about-
Do we want to just make another motion, just in case?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, I'm paranoid.
I move to approve the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Career Technical Education Plan.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now you're armed with two board approvals.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Thank you. Now we're on to item E4, third reading and approval and adoption of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 1330, Use of School Facilities. I think this is your night, Mr. Hetjank.
Yes, hello again. The board was given the 1,000 series for a second reading, was it the last meeting or meeting before? I can't remember. It was the last meeting, at the last, last meeting. And I talked to Dr. Sarvis and Barbara Chiani about bringing this particular regulation forward without the rest, because it is typically part of a packet that goes out to the schools for co-curricular activities, and it would be nice to have the updated regulation in that packet to all schools, so they can reference it during the school year as it's printed and passed once a year. I would want to point out that the one change from the last time that you saw this was that on page four of seven, the second bullet from the top, training and testing for law enforcement agency personnel when the agency provides school reserve officers. We have, we have our Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department, and we already have an agreement with the city, but Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department provides resource officers for our schools, and from time to time, they wish to use our facilities, mainly our track or our pool, for training or testing for applicants or recertification. And so I think with them helping with our resource officers, it's only fair that we allow them to use our facilities for those purposes.
I think that's entirely appropriate. I have one quick question for you, Mr. Hetjank, on, on the last page, it's page 7 of 7, at the very top, it says swimming pool, and then it says, lifeguard services are not provided but are required, and I'm wondering if we need to specify what kind of lifeguard, a Red Cross certified lifeguard, or, I don't know-
That is specified on the Civic Center application itself-
Thank you, okay.
That they have to be Red Cross certified.
Great, okay, perfect. Any other, any other questions? Ready for speaker?
Lane Wheeler, please.
I have several hats, so I'll put on my Santa Barbara Swim Club hat now. I have had a conversation with a couple of board members about access to pools, and that, I really want to applaud you, because I think it's really important that we take a universal approach to this and, and not let individuals outside the board, outside the administration, run who has pool time or field time. One of the concerns I do see in here is that significant stakeholders, groups that are regularly fundraising to help construct and maintain facilities, seem to have a voice that would be equal with, you know, some other community access point that might want this, and I'm just concerned how those get balanced in an equitable way, because we have programs like Swim Club and, for pool use, the Santa Barbara Swim Club, the Water Polo Club, that are feeder programs essentially into our varsity sports programs, junior varsity sports programs at the high schools, and they're significant pieces of that program. Oftentimes, the coaches are working in both venues. I would just think it would be important to, to make sure that those significant stakeholders have a voice in, in maintaining this, and I realize that we're looking at equal fees, the fees, I'm wondering if those are one-time fees or seasonal fees for the use of pool with lights, I'm not sure that it's said that specifically anywhere, so, I'd just like you to consider that when you are voting in favor of this, and it might be important to insert language that would address that specifically. Thank you.
Mr. Hetjank can contact Mr. Wheeler and talk to him about those issues. If you have any questions.
Well, I guess I, I do have a question about that, I mean, who does do, is it you, Mr. Hetjank, that does the scheduling?
No. First of all, I can tell you that on page 5 of 7, there's the last bullet, all fees are per hour unless noted otherwise.
Okay.
And, and when, when a person comes in and fills out a Civic Center permit, that permit is sent to the school site, and typically, the principal designates the athletic director as the keeper of that schedule. And if the facility is available, then the site administrator, be it a principal or assistant principal, has an area where they sign off that says, this site is available. And they also then have an opportunity to add any additional comments, available, all except these dates that they requested, or, or available for all the dates. And then, that site puts that on their master calendar as being reserved, sends the application back to our office, and then I, as the designee from my supervisor, the Assistant Superintendent of Business, sign off on that permit that everything is in insurance, anything else that is to be required for pools, it's $5 million insurance, and anything else, it's $1 million. And then, we assign the fee and approve the permit, and a letter is sent out to the requester, letting them know that the permit is approved.
Mr. Hetjank, what kind of recourse is there for an organization who has requested pool or field time or whatever, and yet that use is being constricted at the school site? I mean, I don't know that that's happening, anecdotally, I have heard that it does happen. Does the group have recourse through you?
What, basically what happens when, when a site, when a site says a certain time period is available, we would hope it would be available. There is something on the Civic Center permit that says, due to scheduling conflicts by the school, that, that, you know, a, a certain time period may not be available. Whenever that does happen, the process typically is, the school notifies the participant, the school notifies us, because we need to adjust our billing, that the school denied use on that date, and therefore, the, the bill that they're sent out is adjusted. It does happen, it doesn't happen very often, very seldom is that one of the issues that comes into my office. You know, we'd hope, we'd hope that, that schools typically have their schedule set first for the year before they start plugging in these other users.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm not trying to ask this, but the, the DP pool is in part to be a community pool, how is that going to work in terms of this?
The DP pool would follow the Civic Center process as the other pools, there was also fundraising for the Santa Barbara High School pool, all, all users of that school that are nonprofit for student use paid, paid the same rate.
And the MOU-
It's basically to cover the cost of chemicals and electricity and water evaporation.
The MOUs specifically state that school use, school programming takes precedence.
So could an organization then schedule so many hours a week, I mean, rather than just an hour, but rather, I mean, blocks of time over the course of a year?
We, we, we work with the principal. We, we had, we had a, a situation of that where one individual group had been using a certain athletic field historically throughout a period of time, and then one year, another group asked to use it, and, and we told the group, you do not have exclusive use, we have two requesters, we're going to work out a shared time where you can both use the field. The, the people that had been using the field historically weren't happy, because they figured they had rights, but, but you don't have rights. And so we use it to, we rely on the principals, assistant principals, the athletic director to balance the use, so not one organization dominates the field where others can't use it. The intent is to let everybody use it. And so sometimes, you just have to go into someone and say, you know, you can't reserve this field or this pool or, or this gymnasium for all of the available hours that the school's not using it, there's other people that want to use it, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? So, shall the third time be the charm? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the adoption of, to approve and adopt the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 1330, Use of School Facilities.
Is there a second? So that's Cordero and Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it doesn't sound like any opposed, passes for zero.
Thank you.
Board action on student expulsion case numbers, let's go in order on the, our worksheets, 0607-66.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes for zero. In case 0607-64.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Passes for zero. Case 0607-77.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes for zero. In the case of 0607-82.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that also passes for zero. And now we're up for a break, and let's make it short so we can make up some time, I know that we are all eager to end on time this evening, so, a five-minute break. Item F1 on the conference agenda is discussion on the Superintendent's Committee to Study School Facilities and School Closure.
Well, we frankly don't know that we will be closing a school, however-
Whoops, excuse me, Chris. We don't know whether we will be closing a school, however, if we do want to consider it somewhere down the line, we need to follow a certain procedure, and we need to have that procedure in place. So I would like to start that procedure, I noticed that the television station was here tonight, because that's a red flag, school closure, and they were asking which school? No, we're pretty far away from anything like that. And since we scheduled a meeting with Dave Hetjank tonight, being the star performer on every agenda item, I don't see why this should be any exception. Dave, would you talk to us about that process?
Yes. As, as discussed last time, the, what we call the 7-11 Committee, which is seven to 11 members as dictated by Education Code, is the committee required when you're thinking about disposing of, of a school property, which means that you're, you're not going to use it, you're going to lease it, you're going to use it for some other purpose. And as discussed previously by myself and the Superintendent and Craig Price, some districts have used a, two committees or a committee with a subcommittee, where this 7-11 committee was a sub of another committee, and it was thought that maybe the board would like to direct the Superintendent at some point in the future, that if we are going to study school closure, we may want a little more broad spectrum on the committee that looks at what guidelines will we use to close a school, when will we recommend closing a school, what we recommend for a use closing the school. All of that can be done with a committee comprised of a membership at, at the board's discretion. But when it comes time to dispose of that site, that's when you need to follow the Education Code. In, in either case, the Education Code, one of their first statements is, they want it to be a very public process, and, and so, that's in the code. So again, just bringing this back for your discussion, if you'd like to see it again as an action item, where you can direct the Superintendent to form a committee at some point in the future, you, last time it was on the agenda, you asked it to be brought back again for further discussion. When I put this on the agenda, I didn't realize we wouldn't have all five members here tonight. members here tonight. You may want to have some discussion tonight. You may want to bring it back a little bit later, totally at your discretion. Like I say, we're not at the point yet, I don't believe we're at the point yet where we have a low enough enrollment to any place to actually close a school. And in two board meetings from now, you'll be given a update on the facilities master plan by Pat Salee.
I'm certainly open to bringing back an action item. And I guess what I would like to see, and other board members chime in, what I would like to see is a suggestion from the superintendent about what that committee would look like, and then what you see the charge of the committee as being, what their initial directions would be, so that we have some, I mean, we can say, yeah, sure, let's move forward with this. But I think before I took any kind of vote, I would want to see what that committee would look like and what their basic charge or direction would be. I don't know what other board members think.
I agree with that. Because I guess my, what I'm interested in knowing is sort of how long would the committee's recommendations be sort of viable for? Because as Mr. Het Young says, it's not like we're about to close a school. So if we are putting together a committee, is it, is it about identifying the parameters for when we close the school? And then would that still be in effect three years from now if that's when enrollment declines enough that it hits what that committee has suggested? I mean, obviously, it's going to be up to any future board to take that action. But I would just, as part of it, I'd like to know sort of how long a term their scope of recommendation would, we would think it might last for. I don't know.
Is that the, I've heard four points here. Is that the entire board's direction?
I think the timeline is critical, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I absolutely agree. Nancy's comments were exactly what I was going to ask about the committee, the makeup and the, and the charge of it. But also, Kate's point is important, too, I think, what the timeline would be. Because when we first started having this conversation, I think it was in response to Mary's comments that we might need to close a school or think about closing a school. And so there was, I think, some sense that we might be doing that in the relatively near future. And now if we're, I don't know where we are with that in terms of, it doesn't, it doesn't feel as imminent. I'm not sure that we're sort of heading down that road very immediately. And so I think it changes what the, what the committee's job would be. Because if we're not going to actually be acting on those recommendations for another three years, whatever it is, whatever it might be, it might change what their role is. Because certainly by the time those three years came around, there would likely be other recommendations and other factors that we would have to take into account. So for them to spend a lot of time making sort of long-term projections doesn't seem like it would be the most useful role for that committee. So I think it, I would like to hear what the, what the role of the committee will be, what the purpose of the committee will be, given that, given where we are now.
Well, and just, I mean, depending on, you know, what the superintendent brings forward, I mean, the role could be looking at more immediate boundary adjustments, for instance. But, you know, closing a school might be more long-term. So there could be both. But you're right, there's probably not even any point in comprising a committee unless there's some more immediate task at hand.
Well, actually, I was thinking in terms of thresholds, either enrollment at specific schools, or enrollment declines in the district, and ways to accommodate that enrollment decline in the district. So that's what I would propose as a basis for, sort of the parameters to kick off our discussion.
We won't know really what next year's enrollment is.
That's right.
Until November, until around November is what we're...
Around November of next year. That's right.
And maybe that's a, I mean, it seems like a while off still, but maybe around then is when we won't even discuss this more again, have it come back.
If you formed a committee today, probably the first thing they'd want to know is, what's our enrollment going to be in November?
Right. So they might as well wait till around then to start, at least have them...
Well, I'd like to be poised. I mean, we know that the birth rate is at a low right now at Cottage Hospital. And, you know, we've been watching the enrollment, and so far, we haven't been in free fall. We've been in a fairly stable decline, albeit a decline. If that picture does changes, I'd like to be poised and ready to move. If it doesn't change, then there are other things that we can do and other cost savings that we can, we can plug into that that could help us with smaller schools.
Any other, any other feedback for Dr. Sarms? Okay.
Thank you.
I think you've got a list going.
We'll come back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Het Young. Now we are on to item F2, first reading of revisions to the management mileage allowance per board policy 4333.1 travel.
This policy has not been revised for a while. Let's see.
Ninety-eight.
Last adopted in 1998. It's been nine years. And since then, IRS mileage rates have increased substantially. And this is an effort to move our mileage allowance up to a point that is accommodated by that rate. Chris Robertson is our Director of Personnel Services.
Recently, the board received a request as a part of the management confidential team negotiations to upgrade the mileage allowance, and it has been since 1998, last time there was an upgrade to this. This request for mileage increase was placed before you as an action item on the June 26 board meeting, and was approved by you at that time. As a result of that approval, the language then under board policy needs to be revised to reflect the agreement that you made with the management confidential team. Attached in your binder is the recommended revisions. And I would just need you to be able to look that over and come back at the next meeting in August to make final approval.
OAS has a head teacher rather than a principal. And there is no kind of, they're mentioned, OAS is mentioned in here, but not as own, in the zoning part of it, but not, does that person get an allowance?
Gwen doesn't get an allowance, partly because she, of her retirement issues in, where she can only go so far in terms of salary. So any employee of the district, though, can claim mileage, whether it's through this or through a mileage sheet for something they do outside of their regular day. But normally, OAS does not take it. I did not include Peabody in this.
Do you want to clarify what you mean by the retirement part of it?
A retiree can only make so much money in any given year.
Oh, she's retired. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Yes. And should there be a time when there ever is a bona fide principal for OAS, they are included in here.
As a principal. Okay.
Rather than a head, I got you.
Okay.
We also talked about, I thought, at some point about moving La Cuesta down to Zone Six.
You're right. We did, we did talk about that. I'm unaware of that.
Well, there was some discussion of that. But since we have not made decisions about consolidating any La Cuesta programs, I understood that you wanted to wait until those decisions are made.
Well, if I recall, I think our concern was that, now I'm not certain, but we had talked about that if we did consolidate it, we'd probably move it to Zone One.
No, but it would still be.
No, no, no. It would be Zone Six.
It would still be perhaps in Galita at those pueblos. So we were saying, well, maybe we should just...
Well, the question was, why isn't it at Zone Six now? Because they travel all over the place. And so...
It would, currently, it would be most appropriate at Zone Six. And we can move it to Zone Six.
I think that that would be more appropriate unless and until it moves someplace else. It should be in Zone Six.
Okay.
And I would say yes. I think that reflected our discussion.
Yes.
Because the principal of La Cuesta travels out there to Zone Six on a very regular basis, you know, making the circuit of school sites.
She travels everywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
Regularly. Yes.
Is that it?
That's it. So that language change is, you'd like me to bring back then for next time?
Yes.
We'll bring that back then as an action item.
Absolutely.
For a second reading.
Yes. Simple change. Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson.
Thank you.
So now we are on to F3, which is first reading of revisions to the number of vacation days for confidential employees per board policy 4350, compensation and related benefits for management slash confidential employees.
And this is similarly tied to negotiations with management confidential employees. Chris?
And this, as Dr. Sarms says, was tied to what you agreed upon last time in regards to approving this request. But the changes will reflect that the confidential employees will receive the same number of vacation days as classified employees effective with the 2007, 2008 school year and forward. There is no status or no loss of days to current staff. But in the future, as our management policy does say, is that many things do for confidential must be reflected through the classified contract. And so we're just trying to line things up accordingly. We have some staff, though, who by virtue of the number of years they have been here, will gain some days this year, 13 days, to be, in fact, between four people.
Not any one staff member. That's an aggregate of all the confidential employees.
Right. So many of these employees have been here 18 years or more. We have 10 confidential employees who would be affected by this in the future, and mostly at the upper end. Anybody else new in the future that we would hire would start with the new policy in place. So I have attached the language for you to look at. I had to attach the entire thing. But on page nine is the change in the language that I need you to be able to review and make any suggestions for changes, et cetera. So.
I just have, there were, there were a bunch of typos.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I don't know if you want to hear about the typos, or I can just give them to you later.
In the entire policy?
Yeah, there, there are just maybe a half dozen at the most, sort of sprinkled throughout.
That would be great to know, as I only amended the last page.
Okay. Oh, okay. So they've been sitting there for a while.
So obviously, this is in for part of our 4,000 series, which will be, have already gone through with a fine-tooth comb to make changes and to catch up with things we've approved in the past that has not been currently reflected in board policy. So we'll be catching a lot of those.
Okay.
But thank you. I appreciate hearing that from you. So.
Any other comments on this? No, once again, it's pretty straightforward.
I'll bring it back next time then.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Wow, that was easy. So we are on to item F4, which is our last item. I think we will get Ms. Parker out of here at 10:30. A report on the oh seven oh eight state budget.
Well, as you know, the state was to adopt a budget almost a month ago. They didn't. That's not unusual. But there have been some, some doings at the state level that, that do impact our budget, since we did adopt our budget, and it is contingent upon the state's budget, which is not yet adopted. That's a, that's a tough one to explain to people. So we've asked Bob Wolf to give us a report on what's happening at the state level.
Just before I start, because of the earlier superintendent's report, the high school district also received $10,000 for the garden grant, in case you weren't aware of that. I don't know the specifics on the schools, but I do know that there's $10,000. Just to go over the state budget update, let's see if I do this right. Nope, that's not it. There we go. This is the state budget process. This was shown to you a while back. You'll see the January 10th on this is when the governor stands up and says, here's what, here's what I think you're willing to do this year. He goes through all of this process. You can see that on June 29, the Budget Conference Committee of the both legislative houses got together and came up with a proposal that they then, then put forward to the Big Five. That was at about 6:00 PM on June 29, just before the budget was due on the 30th. And the Big Five met yesterday afternoon for the first time. So the governor wasn't even in town between all of the first week of July. So it's been about nine days. We don't have anything. So that's where we stand right now. They're still arguing and negotiating the number of the programs. This is a quote from the state comptroller about the budget and the delays and what it will affect. It will start affecting the state budget in July. They don't know if they'll be able to make their, pay their bills. And it will affect us if the budget's not done by July 20, which was in the document that was provided. Here's what the Budget Conference Committee did. They agreed to the full COLA, although there's no full, no COLA on this federal sped. The sunset setting of the second grade testing, they've allowed to disappear and happen. So as of right now, we don't have second grade testing anymore. However, this is a priority of the governor. So this is probably one of the sticking points in the conference that's going on. The large deficits in the supplemental program, no mandated, nothing to do. I put maybe on the last bullet because last year, as you remember, the governor came up with a great plan to increase funding to the meal program in the state, and then turned around and vetoed the bill because it didn't meet his nutritional guidelines. And so right now, that's up in the air. It's really a 4.7% increase. With the COLA, it would be about six cents per meal. They are transferred, they did agree to transfer Cal Works into Proposition 98, which means that the Prop 98 funding will actually go down by that amount of money. And these are the programs that they didn't fund, one of which is, all of which, of course, are the governor's plans. Career technical education is one of the plans that's not being funded. So what will, what will be funded without a state budget? There are three categories, the federal apportionments, the constitutional apportionments, and the continuous apportionments. They're listed here as to what will be funded on a continuing basis up until they finally decide to make, do the budget. These are what the, according to Sacramento B, this is, this is again from their article, certain programs won't be funded. Special education will not be funded. Neither will it, summer school, which we're in the middle of right now and spending money on. Charter schools, community colleges, vendors that start today, this was as of July 1. And so the, basically, the state said, if you're a vendor and you sold us something on July 2, you're not going to get paid. And then the salary and per diems of the elected officials. What's that mean for the programs? You can see here some of the programs, the gate charter school block grant funding will not be funded. Here's some other quotes from Ms. Taylor of the California Department of Education. Depending, the effect of the budget will depend on how long it's, how long it's affected. But according to Ms. Taylor, school districts will continue to run normally by dipping into their reserves. We do have a TRAN out, and so we have the ability to maintain ourselves. Hopefully, the state will get this done sometime by September. And the last quote, as Mr. Villanés, the Republican Assembly Minority Leader, walked out of the Big Five meeting, his quote was, we're still $2 billion apart. The Republicans wish to cut and slash and burn education programs and some other programs, which, of course, the Democrats are saying are draconian. The Republicans in the House and the Senate hold sort of the, because they need two-thirds vote. And so that means that some Republicans would have to jump ship and go over to the Democratic side. So it's just a matter of, that's where we stand. And that's the latest information as of today.
Thank you. Ending on a very bright note. Are we? Any, any questions from board members from Mr. Wolf? No, thank you for the update. Okay. We don't need to return to any consent agenda items. Coming events, I just want to make it clear to the public, our next meeting is not until August 14. Okay.
August 14. We have a ribbon cutting coming up at San Marcos for the gym. I'll get you those dates and times. And the pool dedication at those pueblos.
Okay.
And that won't be for another month and a half. Pool dedication.
I thought it was on July 20.
Did it get put on July 20?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I thought it was being held up. Well, that's coming right up.
Okay. Any board correspondence or board comments?
Does Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They thought Mr. Ealing's was going to be out of town, but now he's going to be in town. So they didn't want to have the dedication without him.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, I had a, just a comment. I wanted to thank Dr. Sarves for the information regarding the, the senior year costs to students, but I was somewhat shocked at the amount, and I was concerned about whether, and I'm pretty sure that most schools have alternatives for students if they can't afford the cost of some of the senior activities. Ways to fundraise to earn their, their way to the, to the activities. I was wondering if we could maybe find out the extent to which that exists on, on those campuses, because it looked like it was, you know, running $250 or something for students to participate in the senior activities that I think most of us assume are part of senior year, and it would be really.
It was a fairly consistent number across each of the three schools.
Yeah. So I'd like to just know a little bit about how students might be able to defray some of that cost.
Good.
Okay.
But I want to, again, thank you for giving us that information.
We'll get a report, and we'll get it in the board brief to you.
Okay. Future agenda items. Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting. Okay?